And we'll begin with a prayer led by Councilman William Edgar, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
It's a difficult time for me for my prayer because it was two years this past Saturday that I lost my wife. And I ask your prayers for her and for the rest of my family. One of my grandsons is in a hospital. Lord bless us and keep us. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Here.
Councilman Hall?
Here.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
Councilman Kinsler?
Here.
Councilman Lee?
Here.
Councilman Mangini?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
And Councilman Arnoney?
Here.
We have eight in attendance, or seven in attendance right now.
Ken is here.
Yeah.
But we'll get in. Yes, we've got a couple out ill. All right. Fire evacuation announcement. In the event that the fire alarm sounds here at Town Hall, I remind those in the audience that we must evacuate Town Hall. Closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to go out the side door to your right or left, we ask that you take the back set of stairs to the backside of Town Hall and out to the parking lot. Minutes of the preceding meetings. First would be the special meeting of September 4th.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Any discussion? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. So six in favor. Councilman Lee abstained. And the minutes of the regular meeting of September 4th.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions?
No abstentions.
So six in favor, one abstention. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our special guest section of the agenda, and we have representatives here today from the Daughters of the American Revolution. And I'd like to call forward Gene Robinson, Jerry Boyd, and Sharon Scavera.
Scavera.
Scavera? You had a W in there.
It's pronounced Scavera.
Okay. If they can come forward for a proclamation. And one of our council members is a member of the DAR as well, so Cindy, if you can join me out front. If the whole council would like to come out front, please do. There's room for us.
Isn't she a founding member?
Ooh.
Oh.
Coming out front?
You got it.
You got it.
Yeah. Doesn't matter.
All right.
Come on. We have...
Oh, Jesus.
We don't mind. Is that time? Okay.
Everyone wants to see what shoes you're wearing tonight.
Yeah.
I'm steering.
So ladies, welcome. And on behalf of the town, to the DAR, thank you so much for all the work that you do in Enfield. And you're here every year to help celebrate Constitution Week. And we've got a proclamation for you. And then I will turn the microphone over to you, Gene, and you can tell us about the good things that the DAR is doing here in Enfield and about Constitution Week. While you have the microphone, anything goes.
[laughing].
So we've got a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2012, as Constitution Week in the town of Enfield. Whereas more than two centuries ago, our founding fathers gathered on September 17th, 1787, in Philadelphia, our nation continues to be guided by the Constitution for the United States of America. And whereas the Constitution of the United States reflects our ideals and establishes a practical system of government and provides three separate branches: the legislative, the executive, and the judicial. And whereas the Constitution protects the rights of our citizens and maintains the rule of law. And whereas during Constitution Week, we reaffirm our commitment to its stated purpose, quote, "to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity," unquote. Now therefore, I, Scott Copeland, Mayor of the town of Enfield, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2012, as Constitution Week in the town of Enfield and encourage the citizens of Enfield to honor the achievements of our founders and to reflect on the rights and privileges of our citizenship. Signed today, September 17th, 2012, 225 years later. Congratulations.
Mayor Copeland, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Copeland, and members of the town council for recognizing this important anniversary. To be responsible citizens, it is imperative that each of us learn, understand, and teach current and future generations the moral, spiritual, and constitutional values upon which our freedoms are based. Knowledge of our history and the documents that support the basis for our government will keep this country free. Three key stones are the Declaration of Independence, signed July 4th, 1776, the Articles of Confederation, which were adopted on November 15th, 1777, and the Constitution, signed 225 years ago today, on September 17th, 1787, and all of the amendments which followed. And part of the proclamation, which Mayor Copeland just read, included the preamble of the Constitution. And I'd like to just read it. It's very brief, and I'm sure many people are already familiar with it. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." And if you would indulge me for a moment, I'd like to share a brief history lesson. Have you ever wondered what happened to the 56 men who signed the Declaration of Independence?
I never have these pages, right?
Five signers were captured by the British as traitors and tortured before they died. Twelve had their homes ransacked and burned. Two lost their sons serving in the Revolutionary Army. Another had two sons captured. Nine of the 56 fought and died from wounds or hardships of the Revolutionary War. They signed and they pledged their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor. What kind of men were they? Twenty-four were lawyers and jurists. Eleven were merchants. Nine were farmers and large plantation owners. Men of means, well-educated. But they signed the Declaration of Independence knowing full well that the penalty would be death if they were captured. Carter Braxton of Virginia, a wealthy planter and trader, saw his ships swept from the seas by the British Navy. He sold his home and properties to pay his debts and died in rags. Thomas McKean was so hounded by the British that he was forced to move his family almost constantly. He served in the Congress without pay, and his family was kept in hiding. His possessions were taken from him, and poverty was his reward. Vandals or soldiers looted the properties of Dillery, Hall, Clymer, Walton, Gwinnett, Hayward, Rutledge, and Middleton. At the Battle of Yorktown, Thomas Nelson Jr. noted that the British General Cornwallis had taken over the Nelson home for his headquarters. He quietly urged General George Washington to open fire. The home was destroyed, and Nelson died bankrupt. Francis Lewis had his home and properties destroyed. The enemy jailed his wife, and she died within a few months. John Hart was driven from his wife's bedside as she was dying. Their 13 children fled for their lives. His fields and his gristmill were laid to waste. For more than a year, he lived in forests and caves, returning home to find his wife dead and his children vanished. Our forefathers sacrificed everything to ensure that we had the right to vote, that our birthright should not be taken lightly. I ask you all to take time to remember these patriots and all of those who have sacrificed their blood and treasure since the Revolution to preserve our freedoms. Consider all of the men and women just from Enfield who have been killed in war since 1775, whose names are engraved on monuments scattered around this town, in other American cemeteries, and in cemeteries overseas. Thank all of those who have served in the military and the families who were left behind during their absence. Show them the respect they have earned. Our elections are a symbol of democracy to people around the world. Honor these men and women by fulfilling your responsibility as a citizen of our country by voting on Tuesday, November 6th. Remember that we, the people in this room, watching us on television and across this country, choose our future history. We must learn from the past, but always plan for the future and prepare to meet its challenges. Thank you.
Well said.
And now, just as a segue into a brief commercial for Rees Across America. This year will be our fifth year of having a Rees Across America ceremony here in Enfield. It is at St. Patrick's Cemetery on December 15th, which is a Saturday, and it's held at noon, simultaneously with over 700 other ceremonies across the United States and the rest of the world. I would like to ask your help this year, as we've continued to grow in size and scope and more people become familiar with the ceremony. I would like to ask a few things of you, the public. The Rees Across America truck caravan will be coming back to Enfield in the Parkman School on Tuesday, December 11th of this year. And if you're out and about when the truck comes through, the caravan, please line the streets along its route and welcome it to our town. If you're able to attend the ceremony on Saturday at noon, you're more than welcome to do so. It's free, anyone can come, and I promise you, it is a very moving ceremony. If you are inclined, you might make a donation in any amount or order a wreath. There are two parts to this. Every wreath costs $15. And if you choose, and there is a list of nonprofits here in Enfield that can benefit because for every $15 for a wreath that you purchase, $5 goes to that particular charity. So it's a win-win. Our goal this year is to raise enough money to cover all of the graves of those who died for Enfield during the wars of the 20th and 21st century. That's approximately 75 wreaths that we'd like to see laid on these specific graves. And anyone who's had a veteran in their family or someone that they'd like to remember can also purchase a wreath and pick it up after the ceremony. To learn more, you can go online to www.reesacrossamerica.com. There are paper order forms if you prefer to send it in, or you can order online. And that ends my special commercial.
Right.
But thank you.
Great. Thank you, Gene. Appreciate it. Thanks so much for being here today. Thank you much. Thank you. And we will see you at Rees Across America.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Gene, Jerry, and Sharon. Appreciate you being here and appreciate all the efforts of the Daughters and the good work you do here in town. Next item on our agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Come forward to the front table. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. And we ask that you refrain from the use of personalities. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? Anybody? Mr. Mijak.
Jeff Mijak, 3 Sharp Street here in Enfield. This year's been a good year for solar panels in the town. I don't know if you've noticed or not, but we've had a record-setting year, in part due to the rebates that are available through the Clean Energy Fund and the 30% federal tax advantage. Ray and his staff have done a good job keeping up with them. Like I said, it's been a banner year for solar panels. And the nice thing about residents putting them on their roofs, they're tax-free. You're not going to add anything to your property tax by Connecticut statute. So I encourage people to look at it. The rebates end by December 31st or when the funds run out. So take a look at it. Also, I believe there was some conversation about putting solar panels here on the Town Hall. When I first heard about that, I said, that's got to be nuts. It just, it doesn't fit the character. But I was sitting out there yesterday at the Family Fun Day, and I looked up. The roof is very high. I don't think it would really look all that bad. Could we see a drawing map of what it would look like? And would the council be willing to take and look at the drawing and make a determination from there? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Public Communications? Anyone else? All right. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Next item on the agenda is Councilman Communications and Petitions. Councilman Mangini?
Thank you. I just very briefly wanted to, again, thank Mayor Copeland and my colleagues in the council for honoring the DAR and acknowledging our Constitution celebration. It is our 225th anniversary. I asked our town manager's office to provide each of us up here with the Americans' Creed because I just wanted to, you know, reflect for a minute. I know Gene Robinson did read the preamble of the Constitution, but in our packet online and in the hard copy, you've got the Americans' Creed. And I just want you to bear with me while I read it. "I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy and a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity, for which American patriots sacrifice their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and to defend it against all enemies." And this was written by William Tyler Page. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Kinsler?
Just to share Cindy's sentiments, thank the DAR for coming out. All too often, we forget about, especially our children, and taking the time to actually have them read it and ask you questions and understand what it means. I know that I myself didn't really understand what it meant until I was an adult, and it's good to get ahead of that and really for our future leaders to be able to go out there and have a handle on what the Constitution means for them and their children and their future. It's really nice. I also want to thank everybody out there who showed up with the kids for Family Day yesterday. Some of us got a little wet in dunk tanks. The mayor and I and a few other people were the victims of some strategically placed pitches and some pushed levers. But it was really nice to see the turnout. It was huge. And hopefully, everybody had a great time. It'll be even better for next year. And that's it.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Communications? Tom? Councilman Arnoney?
I just answered a question. Answered a question from last week. We were talking about the school construction and Crex versus ours. So I did some checking this week, and according to Craig Smith from the Bureau of School Facilities and Plan Reviewer, that the Creck Magnet schools are averaging at about $398 a square foot for their construction costs. And they're getting a 95.8% reimbursement rate on those costs. And according to Silver and Petricelli, our cost is going to be around $200 per square foot. So you can see the vast difference there in the per-foot cost of construction. And again, thank you for bringing this up last week. It's nice to have, you know, get the numbers out and the real numbers out to the folks out in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Deputy Mayor Nelson?
First, I would like to wish Councilman Bosco's wife a happy birthday, and that's why he is gone tonight. Priority is his family. So happy birthday to Jackie Bosco. Second, I would like to thank the Fort Town Fair for putting on another great fair this weekend. Had a lot of fun, spent too much money, and ate too much junk food, but again, it was a great time. And then last, I'd like to, or next, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move B1, D, and E to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Second.
Excuse me. You need, we have your desk, the first motion. Add something to...
Pause that for a second. I'd like to make a motion and add item B1 to items for discussion. Appointment, town council appointed. Zoning Board of Appeals. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Frank Alimo. Replacement would be until 12/31/2015.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion on adding that item to the agenda? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Item's been added to the agenda?
Now, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move B1, D, and E to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous? Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I've got a couple of items. First, a couple of thanks. Back on Tuesday, September 11th, the Enfield Fire District and all of the fire districts in Enfield put on a very nice and moving 9/11 parade and vigil at the fire station on Waymouth Road. Well-attended, and it was a beautiful night with a lot of reflection to September 11th, 11 years ago. And so thanks to the Enfield Fire District and for the town of Enfield for not forgetting. As Councilman, as Deputy Mayor Nelson had mentioned, this past weekend was the Fort Town Fair, and I was out at the parade on Saturday morning. And beautiful parade, well-attended, very fun. Seemed like a very fun parade to be in. I'm a judge for the parade as Enfield's representative. So you get a nice vantage to see the parade come by, but people were having a really good time, and they had a stellar weekend for weather as well. So hopefully, they did very well.
Yes, beautiful.
And as Councilman Kinsler had mentioned, a couple of us were out at Family Day on the greens, thanks to Amy Whitbro and her crew of folks from Enfield Public Schools coordinating the event, and then a whole array of civic organizations out supporting the PTOs, civic organizations having booths, fundraisers, activities. I sat in the dunk tank for Enfield Street School PTO and the Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education. And every ball that was thrown, I was dunked because mainly, they were young kids. And so if they got it anywhere close to the target, they were able to hit the target and knock me in, and they were getting laughs. So it was fun. It was, and it actually wasn't all that cold. But it was a very well-attended weekend. And then somehow, I was roped into climbing on the Boy Scout rope. What do you call it, Bill? Rope?
Monkey bridge.
Monkey bridge? Well, I tell ya, I got halfway and fell to the ground on my feet. On my feet.
Eight hundred kids crossed that thing yesterday, and no one fell off.
No, you fell off. I was in good company. Bill told me he fell off. And it was just a beautiful day, and just kudos to everyone that puts on the event. And nice, fun, free day for kids and families. Upcoming on Tuesday, September 25th, is the Help Bag Hunger event at ShopRite. And ShopRite will be collecting donations, and there'll be guest baggers at ShopRite from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the proceeds support the Enfield Loaves and Fishes and the Enfield Food Shelf. So if you have a chance to stop by ShopRite on Tuesday, September 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., I will promise not to break your eggs and smoosh your loaf of bread. I will do the best I can in bagging groceries. And then on, if you're a golfer, Saturday, October 6th, at 9:00 a.m. at Grassmere Country Club, the Fermi Girls Soccer Team is having a fundraising golf tournament, nine-hole golf tournament. And you can get details on the golf tournament directly from Grassmere Country Club. And then my last comments, we've got something pretty remarkable going on in Enfield this week. And the Enfield Public Schools and the Enfield Town Council, town of Enfield, have worked together over the past year in an effort to respond to the recent teen suicides that we had here in Enfield. And one of the results of the meetings that were held over the past year is bringing Rachel's Challenge to Enfield. And Rachel's Challenge is a program to equip and inspire individuals to replace acts of violence, bullying, and negativity with acts of respect, kindness, and compassion. Rachel's Challenge is based on the life and writings of Rachel Scott, who was the first victim of the Columbine School shootings in 1999. Through her example, Rachel's Challenge is making a positive impact in the lives of millions of people every year. So this week, tomorrow, there'll be a public forum for the public to attend, and we're encouraging parents, aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, grandparents, public, even if you don't have kids in school at that age, to come to one of the three presentations. And so tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 18th, at John F. Kennedy Middle School at 7:00 p.m. Then Wednesday, the 19th, at Fermi High School at 7:00 p.m. And Thursday, September 20th, at Enfield High School at 7:00 p.m. All community members are invited to this town-wide initiative. During the school... During the school day this week as well, the Rachel's Challenge is being presented to the students. And today, Monday, September 17th, there were presentations at three intermediate schools, Eli Whitney, Parkman, and Prudence Crandall. Tomorrow, Rachel's Challenge will be at John F. Kennedy Middle School during the day. And they have an assembly for each of the grade levels. And on Wednesday, there at Fermi. And Thursday, at Enfield High School. So the students are having this program presented to them, and the public is encouraged to attend one of the night sessions. And I'll be there tomorrow evening. All the reviews for Rachel's Challenge is a very powerful program, something that you will, you will take home, information that you can use either with your kids, your grandkids, or just your neighbors and people that you come across. So again, Rachel's Challenge, 7:00 p.m. Tuesday at JFK, Wednesday at Fermi, Thursday at Enfield High School. And it is free to attend. So hopefully, we'll see you there. That's it for my comments. Anyone else? Okay?
Scott, I just wanted to clarify. With the sessions that they're offering, is it acceptable to go during the day?
No.
No.
It is not acceptable to go during the day. The public, the public sessions are geared for the public.
For evening.
In the evening. And the sessions during the day are geared towards the students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the manager's report and communications. Matt?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The only thing that I have is a reminder that Monday, September 24th, 6:00 p.m., we're having a special meeting to discuss Higgins.
Yes.
And if there are no questions for me, I'm going to cede the rest of my time to the town attorney for his report.
Any, I actually have a request for you, too. But, so there's a couple, so don't turn off your microphone. Councilman Lee?
Well, I'll turn it off so I can mutter under my breath.
Do you have any insight or anything definitive you can share about the state's project on Elm Street?
We are going to get something up on the internet or webpage about it, get something on ETV.
Okay.
It's my understanding that that project has started.
Yeah.
And they've done a couple of different small areas that were kind of intrusive to people. But it's going to get underway in earnest, I believe, the 24th was the date that I was told.
Okay.
And it's probably going to be about a three-to-four-week cycle. It'll start after 6:00 p.m. or after 6:00 p.m. and last till 6:00 a.m. And the reason behind that, you might remember, was it last year or a year before? That time seems to fly.
Both.
Right. We've, on Hazard Avenue, have had quite a bit of construction. And you might remember the section that they did last year, they did during the day. And we had lobbied pretty hard that it really should have been in the evening, but their, their metrics didn't, you know, warrant that based upon the time. In this particular case, the numbers are there that do warrant the 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And I know that for the residents, you know, in that area, and this is different in many respects than the Hazard Avenue because there is a high incidence of residential uses along Elm Street in Shaker that, you know, make up the project area. But unfortunately, that also is one of the high-traffic areas during the peak times during the day.
Mm-hmm.
That forces them to try to get this project done after the normal work hours. We will have numbers up to contact the state for, you know, if there are any issues with that. I know that the mayor had some residents get in contact with him. And I believe they were, they had a conversation with the representative from the state. I don't know exactly how, how well that went over, but, you know, they tried to identify, you know, what the issues were. And, you know, again, you know, unfortunately, it's going to be a milling project and then an overlay. So there is going to be a machine that's probably going to spend an hour or two, you know, in front of each residence during those hours. But we will get some information up on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Arnoni?
Could you check the website on November's elections? It still has the two polling places there. I don't know if that's still in the air or what.
Well, it's definitely not in the air from my perspective, but I will check that.
Could you please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions for Matt? Matt, my request, and it doesn't have to be, it's not for this evening, but if you can prepare for the next council meeting, could you give us an update on your progress with Sforza Park? Because although it's September, we know May will be right around the corner, and the goal is to have some form of dedication for Memorial Day weekend of 2013. Anyone else for Matt? Thank you. Next item, Town Attorney's Report and Communications.
No, no, no.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on a couple of things from last week. We talked briefly. It was questions regarding the tax exemption status for the solar panels that Mr. Majak referenced. There's a state statute that does that. We have on the books an older ordinance that by its terms was a little bit broader than this statutory as-of-right piece, which included all buildings, which would not be limited to just residential. But that only covered installations between 19, October 1st, 1976, and October 1st, 2006. So if at some point, the council wishes to go back and relook at that and whether or not it would be something to authorize on that, we can certainly do so. I've talked to Matt. I think we're going to put up on the, on the website, the statutory reference for the exemption, so people can find an easier way of getting that information and what they need to do on that. So that's sort of getting back to that and on that. The second issue was we, or I received through Mayor Copin, a request with regard to, a question of littering as it applies to the free home delivery of newspapers that are thrown occasionally on the lawn or stoop or driveway, at least around my neighborhood. It comes up in spring with the tulips and everything as the snow melts. It's been an issue that's been faced by a lot of different towns, both in Connecticut and across the country. I've got two more files, the same size of this, from other issues, the same issue in other jurisdictions around here that we've been dealing with. It's a little bit different than your typical litter, and it's not typically classes litter. And the reason for that is there's court cases that take it out to include the First Amendment, which is probably appropriate today on Constitution Day, because the delivery of handbills and newspapers has traditionally been the means of bringing information to the public. Going all the way back, the Supreme Court cites Thomas Paine's Common Sense pamphlet. And the delivery of those pamphlet-earing was that. So you can have certain reasonable rights, or excuse me, reasonable regulations on time, place, and manner, but the outright banning of that has not been held to be constitutional. There's a number of ways that municipalities have tried to get around that, where mandatory sort of opt-out, like the do-not-call list, a do-not-delivery-type list. Most of the more regular daily, weekly, I won't name any cases of the wrong one, but also have, if you call, they can get yourself off their delivery list. It may not help you with your neighbors who don't pick them up, but at least you can get them off your loans. So if the council already, if one of its subcommittees wants to sort of look at that, we'd be happy to start getting some guidance on how to go through all that, on that. If not, you know, there was, there was one case where someone had repeatedly asked me to be taken off the delivery list, and the newspapers kept showing up on his lawn, and he took a federal court case, and he won on that. So there are remedies for individual homeowners, but, you know, the first place would generally be to start with the delivery company of the newspaper directly and see if you can gain some satisfaction that way.
Since I was, I was the recipient of that request, are you going to respond in writing to that resident?
I will. Yeah, I can, I'll respond directly to him and outline those steps and CC the rest of the council also on that.
Okay. And then for the council, if the council wants to pick that up at a subcommittee level, we can try to determine what the most appropriate subcommittee is that would deal with, with that issue. No, that's not a, it's a subcommittee of the council, so it's like general government or...
I knew that was covered.
Yeah, I like general government. Or public works.
Public works.
No, no. Or even public safety.
Definitely not.
What's that, public safety? So once we get Kevin's email, if there's interest to pick that up and run with it further, we'll assign it to get it. Oh, that was a good one. We'll decide at that time. All right. Kevin, do you have anything else?
No, that would wrap it up for me, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone else have any news for Kevin? Nothing?
It's not by me, thank you.
Get it? Pick up? News? You did. Flew right over your head. Okay. Next item is reports of special committees of the council. Councilman Mangini?
I have one. We had a prison meeting, prison liaison meeting, and the Enfield PD thanked the state DOC for their assistance with the outlaw visitation. And also, we're down in numbers of community members. And I'd like to ask through our mayor to our town manager, Matt, could you please find out how many committee members were down and how we can begin to solicit and bring that committee back up to an active level? Because we're, we're down, I think, a good three or four, four people. So if you, if you could maybe do some research, that'd be helpful. We've got until December for our next meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I've got two items, two events coming up here that are being sponsored by the Enfield Cultural Arts Commission. The first one is an event taking place at the Enfield Senior Center, and it's the return of the accomplished pianist Paul Bisaccia. He's going to perform a number of standards, but included, and that will be a performance of Rhapsody in Blue. This was a sellout last year, and the commission is thrilled to be working with Paul again to bring him back to Enfield. The concert is on October 14th. It's at 2:00 p.m., should last about two hours. This is a ticketed event, and tickets are $7, and are available at the Recreation Department here on Main Street and at the Senior Center on Elm Street. I'll give out a phone number as well for ticket information. It's 253-6420. And again, that's for Paul Bisaccia at the Enfield Senior Center on the 14th. The second item from the Cultural Arts Commission is a bus trip that they're hosting again. This is on October 17th. It's a trip to the Culinary Institute of America. This trip is a, I believe they're leaving in the morning around 8:00 a.m., and then it comes back, I think, by 8:00 p.m. You know what? I don't have all the details here, but also, I'll come back to that one at the end of the evening, Scott. And I'm all set for now.
Thanks, Bill. Any other reports of special committees of the council? Okay, we will move to old business, which all remains on the table, correct? New business? Item D, Discussion Resolution, Request for Transfer Funds for Building Inspection Division, $52,000. My sense is that that stays on the table, waiting for additional information from Matt. Next would be Request for Transfer Funds for Community Development Part-Time Salaries, I believe we're ready to move on that with discussion. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made to community development salaries part-time, $24,040 from General Fund Building and Mechanical Licenses and Permits, $24,040. Certified the funds are available in Nanny Director Finance.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Matt?
Two pieces of information. One, we sent out on Friday, I believe. There was requested that we send the owner, mortgage holder, identifications for the properties that were on the BLIT list. Believe everybody should have, hopefully, gotten. I didn't get any bounce back, so I assumed everybody had gotten that piece. The second piece was given, to give a couple of numbers that could amend this request from the 24040. The amount needed to reimburse that particular line item for the 12-week program is $13,499.64. I'll round this up. The next piece was the amount to allow us to have a transition of a three-month period, keeping one of the individuals from the 12-week program for three months as we bring a new BLIT community development employee onboard, I should say. And that would cost us $4,499.88 for that. So I would recommend, if that's the direction of council, to reduce the appropriation or transfer amount from that 2440 down to around $18,000.
Okay, so we would need an amendment for $18,000.
Motion to amend.
By Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. So there's, discussion is on the amendment to change the dollar amount from 2440 to $18,000. Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Have we spoke with the temporary BLIT officer to see if he's willing to stay for that additional time?
I don't know if they've had that, no, that has not been done. But we have three to choose from, so...
Okay.
Yes, we should get somebody.
Okay.
Further discussion on the amendment? Then by a show of hands, all those in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? Okay, unanimous on the amendment? Any further discussion on the, on the motion as amended? So this, just so that everyone's clear, this reimburses the account for the one part-time for the remainder of the fiscal year, plus a three-month transition period overlap.
To effectively have two part-time...
Correct.
...community development individuals working.
Through December.
Right. Yeah, effectively, October, November, December. Because the 12-week program ends at the end of this month.
And then your intention is that budget time to be discussing with Ray and with community development on how this program, BLIT enforcement's going to be structured going forward?
Yeah, one of our concerns is that, that we want to ramp up at the point in time when, actually, before we get a lot of the complaints coming in, so we can be more effective earlier in the program. You know, this year, we waited until July and already had a backlog of cases. You know, in reality, we're probably looking at sometime in March, April is when we would want to restart, you know, a modified version of what we did this summer. So you'll be seeing something, you know, my guess, January, February, in terms of recommendation.
Councilman Edgar?
Yeah, I'm not clear on this. How was the young lady that went from building inspector to BLIT paid?
She, she was when she was working as a BLIT community development officer or community development individual. She was being paid out of this, but we actually had, you know, we budgeted a full year of a part-time position. So from my perspective, she was getting paid out of the line item as it existed. So we wouldn't be reimbursing that particular expense. Then when she was working for building, she would be paid out of the building part-time.
Was there a change in the rate of pay?
I believe it was the same as what our previous individual was. I think it was 1953 an hour.
Right. But the person that went out of building inspector was full-time or part-time? Because if she was full-time, she was making more than that. I'm just wondering how she was paid? What fund?
Well, again, when, when Janice was working out of, for, for the community development, she was getting paid, I believe, the 1953. I mean, that's from what I remember looking earlier today. You know, she was getting the same rate as what we were paying for the, the previous BLIT person. When she was working out of building, she'd be getting paid a different number, and off hand, I can't, $35? So under her building duties, she would have been charged out at $35. So, under her building duties, she would have been charged out at $35.
So, she had a split rate of pay?
Correct, depending upon which, you know, job she was doing.
However it comes out, she was never paid less than the 35?
Well, if she was doing BLIT duty, she would have been being charged at the 1953. If she was working building, she would have been charged at 35. So, she was doing building, building work is $35. The BLIT was at 1953.
So, if she was over at BLIT, she took a reduction of pay?
Correct, because those duties are different than the building inspectors.
Okay, that don't quite make sense to take a reduction to do that.
Well, I think it's because, again, you know, she wasn't forced to do it. You know, the requirements for being within community development and the BLIT enforcement are a different set of duties and a different set of experience than the higher level at the building. So, I don't think we should be paying people more than what the worth, you know, we've quantified the work to be worth.
The other question that comes to mind, then, when she went part-time, she lost all her bennies?
No, she was never, that position was never full-time for us.
Okay.
Yeah, that individual has always been part-time. You know, originally, she was part-time in the building department, and then when we had, you know, the position opened up after the part-time BLIT enforcement individual left, she started handling some of those duties, again, through community development in that particular line item with a different rate of pay.
All set? Councilman Kinsler?
So, just so I understand, Matt, so that person went from a part-time position to an increased-hours part-time position, essentially?
Right, doing two different
Two different things.
Duties, two different rates of pay.
Getting her closer to like a full-time amount of hours and up on a part-time basis temporarily.
Yeah, I think there were times when she was probably over 35 hours. Yeah.
Any further questions? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Evstein.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Chairman Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Councilman Nelson?
Four.
And Councilman Arnone?
Four.
We have seven in favor and one abstention.
Thank you. Next item, discussion resolution, resolution to accept short sale payment for 52 John Dot Drive. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council agrees to accept $1,762 from Alice G. Dustin in exchange for a release of the town's mortgage deed on her property at 52 John Dot Drive, Enfield, Connecticut. Be it resolved that the mortgage note from Alice G. Dustin to the town of Enfield dated September 8, 2010, and the mortgage modification agreement dated April 14, 2011, is hereby deemed to be paid in full. Be it resolved, the town manager is hereby authorized to sign on behalf of the town of Enfield, a release of mortgage and any other documents required for the short sale, subject to the review and approval of the town attorney.
So moved.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion? Councilman Arnone?
Well, I think if we don't agree to this, I believe that the whole structure of their deal blows up, because, you know, they need to get the lien holders, you know, within, online of this. So, this would then proceed with the foreclosure, is what we were told.
And then, after the foreclosure, we're still on the list, high on the list for, or none at all?
No.
That's what I want to hear.
If we, if the short sale does not go through, at least from the current valuations of the property and the, what's owed on the first mortgage and the second mortgage, which are ahead of us, the vast likelihood, or the highest likelihood, is that we'll end up with zero.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm just going to, just for everyone's knowledge, I'm not going to vote to accept the short sale. I just, in my discussions, I understand the situation that the homeowner is in, but, and I don't look at it as a dollar figure, I look at it more in principle, that there's people that are mixed into this deal that are not taking shared sacrifice, as you can say, in the process. And the real estate agents are getting full commissions, the attorneys are getting a pretty sizable fee. I just don't think it's the right type of deal that we should be entering in, that there's other alternatives for this property, for foreclosure to be purchased by someone that's willing to renovate and either have it as their personal property or flip it and sell it and have it become a, you know, it's also a blighted property today as well. So, to clean up the property, get it back to being a productive house in a very attractive neighborhood. So, I'm just not in favor of the short sale at this time. Councilman Kinsler?
I agree. I think we should pass on this, let it run its course, let it go into foreclosure if that's what happens, or let them come back with a second offer. But I agree totally that we should not be on the hook for that and being the only party sacrificing, when we could well make out better by letting it go.
Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I mean, given that position, I had a couple of questions, just to clarify, perhaps just for the public. Am I correct that Ms. Dustin is not occupying the property at this time?
That's my understanding.
And I know you sent out the current BLIT registry. Do you know if this property is currently on it?
I think the one that we sent out to you was from two weeks ago, so it hasn't been updated to reflect that, I don't believe. It's correct.
So, we don't know if it is?
Yeah, it's not, it's not on the list that you have.
Okay.
But I know that they are
It's in the pipeline.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mangini?
Thank you. No one really encourages or likes to see properties going to foreclosure, and God knows, in the business, Carol, Ken, and I see this all the time. But Scott made a good point here. I don't see where our town is going to benefit by us passing this resolution and having others other than the person who had possession of this home doing well in the resolution. I think that this is something that we need to take a close look at, and I'm not going to support this at this time either. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Evstein.
Councilman Hall?
Against.
Chairman Copan?
Against.
Councilman Kinsler?
Against.
Councilman Lee?
Against.
Councilman Mangini?
Against.
Councilman Nelson?
Against.
And Councilman Arnone?
Four.
We have one in favor, six against, and one abstention.
Okay, thank you. There is no item, there are no items for discussion, because it's all been moved to miscellaneous. So, the first item under miscellaneous is the Town Council appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jake Keller to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler.
Motion to close nominations.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion?
I'd like to welcome Jake back. We knew we'd get him back here one way or another.
Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Jake Keller.
Chairman Copan?
Jake Keller.
Councilman Kinsler?
Jake Keller.
Councilman Lee?
Jake Keller.
Councilman Mangini?
Jake Keller.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Jake Keller.
And Councilman Arnone?
Jake Keller.
We have eight in favor, none against.
Next item is discussion resolution, request for transfer funds for a closeout of fiscal year end 2011, 12, $419,643. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8 of the Town Charter, the following transfer, as referenced in Attachment A, is hereby made. Certified the funds are available. John Wilcox, Deputy Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion? Councilman Mangini?
Could we ask our town manager just to give a little background on this for the public, so we understand where we are with closing out?
Well, this is just year-end closeout for fiscal year 2012, balancing out, making sure all the numbers line up in the proper alignment for the audit.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Chairman Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Arnone?
Four.
It's unanimous?
And the next item is discussion resolution, resolution regarding the agreement to locate power generation utilities on town-owned land. Whereas the Enfield Town Council has authorized the town manager to enter into an agreement with Sun Edison, which will provide electricity at a fixed rate for a period of 20 years. And whereas Sun Edison will provide said electricity by installing solar panels at the town's water pollution control facility and police department. And whereas, by the terms of the agreement, the council must seek from the Planning and Zoning Commission a report per Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-24. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the proposed agreement for the provision of electricity by means of installation of solar panels at the water pollution control facility and the Enfield Police Department be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission per Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-24.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hall, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Chairman Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Arnone?
Four.
It's unanimous?
That completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Mr. Sheridan?
Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. I heard some numbers before about the schools, and I have to correct a few things. When they talk about generalities of previous schools that were built, that's one thing, but when they're talking about this particular school, we're talking about 170,000 square foot, and it comes to $309 a square foot by CREG. And our addition is at $513 a square foot. And what I, my concern is that if we have this, first of all, we spent a lot of money recently upgrading Enfield High School, the labs and so forth. I don't remember the numbers, I'd have to look that up, how much we'd recently spent, but it was a lot of money. And if it takes four years to build this new school, and we're down, let's say, a low number, 800 students, 200 a year, we're down 300 this year. So, if we're down 200 a year, which we have been for the last 10 years, at least 200, we'll be down 800 students, figuring conservatively, by the time this school's built. And my thought goes to, if we have empty seats and we're accepting money to help build this school, then we're going to bust kids in? I mean, I don't know how many kids we bust in last year. I remember, I think, I shouldn't say numbers, because I don't like to be inaccurate, but it was, there were a lot of students being bust into JFK. And like I said, I don't want to say the number. I think I know the number, but I don't want to say it unless I'm completely accurate. So, those are the things that concern me, and I said the other night, you know, I'm not against education. I want our kids to have the best, but I want it at a reasonable price, the best bang for our buck. And from these numbers, it doesn't appear to me that we're getting that. So, that's my concern and continues to be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Public Communications? Councilman Communications? Just, not as a response to Mr. Sheridan, but just additional information. Jack, after we had our mayor's advisory council meeting last Monday, I did ask Matt to officially look into the square footage issue and to also work with CREG to get, you know, what CREG believes their square, their costs, their square footage, their cost per square foot is. Plus, for the proposed Enfield High School, it's not only taking in the new construction, but the renovate as new, and what the total dollar amount is, the total square footage and the cost per square foot. So, I don't know if you have that, or?
Yeah, I don't have it all in one easy-to-read document yet, which is what my plan was, but going back to the, what our referendum information refers to is the plan that was put together by Silver Petroselli. What they are estimating our proposed addition costs per square foot, including the soft costs, so this is construction as well as all the design, engineering, inspection, and all that stuff, is at $290 a square foot. The renovate as new, they're estimating at $200 a square foot. Now, I think here somewhere, I'm hoping this had, I don't know if this document has what the actual numbers are in terms of the square footage, so they broke it out. Hesitate just to throw numbers out there. I'm hoping this has it here.
It's better not to throw
Yeah, that's why
A number.
Yeah, I don't want to do that, and this particular document doesn't have the square footages broken out, unfortunately. Yes, yes, and that's what I had hoped this one document had that, but it just kind of...
And that's the number. We don't need to, you know, we can get the number, he'll put it into a nice email, and I'll, because it's going to go out, you know, to the entire council, but also out to the entire mayor's advisory council, because there's a point of discussion.
Yeah.
To get that, you know, get what we feel as a town is our official number, and verify with CREG what they feel their official number is, so that
Right.
Okay? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, and that's the footwork I tried to do. Now, we're bringing forth to the voters renovate as new. That's what we're, that's what the question's going to be.
Correct.
That's $200 a square foot, which I mentioned tonight.
Yep.
Just so we, yeah.
Yep. And that, again, is based upon, as you said
Right, and the number, the correct number that I have, the 398, I believe, is their average cost. I don't know if you're going to be able to get out of them, their, you know, per-school cost, not a very easy thing to get. But we're lucky to get the
Well, the fortunate, the fortunate thing that we do have is the document they filled out to file for their building permit. So, contained within that is the information of what their estimate is.
Yeah, great.
So, we'll be able to get that, just, like I said, I haven't assembled it all into one document yet to get that answer out.
Thank you.
From the Silver Petroselli webpage, Scott, it lists the renovate as new as 191,357, and the addition, proposed addition, 147,717. 191,357. That's renovate as new and proposed 147,717 additions, plural.
I would, I would prefer me to get the numbers.
Correct.
Because that's a little bit higher than what the total, because the total is right around 312,000 square foot.
Right.
So, what
That's the reason why we don't throw out numbers, that we wait till we get double-checked and verified, and it's under Matt's name, so it has to be right. And who knows what version is on Petroselli's website, too? Tom?
Just, Matt, just, I'll see if the guys in the other room can throw up on the screen. The best place to go right to the source on that, and that's www... The, the best place to go right to the source on that, and that's www.nfields, with an S, future.com. They have the full report, as does the Board of Ed website.
As well as the, the town
Town website. And you can go in there and you can break it down to the miniscule, to the classroom, if you'd like, on what the square footages are going to be, what they are today, and take your calculator out and divide the total square footage by the total price tag and, or take the total square footage and divide it by our share, however you want to do it. And that, that is an accurate number as today, until the referendum passes. If it does, then the building committee will, will be formed and, you know, any changes afterwards to what the actual building's going to look like would happen at that point. But I think it's important that the public goes out and takes a look at it themselves, because we, like you said, Scott, we're throwing a lot of numbers around here, and I, I would go right to the architect's report, take that number, divide it, and you'll, you'll have your answer.
That, that is the basis for our referendum, our, our expla, our, our text for that.
Explanatory text.
That's the word, that's it. Goes back to that report as being the basis for what we're asking. And there's four different, actually, that, that report, which is a fairly extensive report, is broken into four different PDFs on our website, and so far, I'm O for two for picking the right one that has that information, so I apologize.
Okay. All right, and, and then just one other point that Jack made reference to, and it was the previous referendum for Enfield High School, and that was for their library and some administrative space. And that, that is the only space within Enfield High School that's not being touched. So the library itself, that was part of the previous referendum, is not, you know, renovate as new, because it, it's too new to fall under that classification.
Good.
So, all right, any other councilman communications?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
You, too.